Order. This is the Board of Zoning Appeals for the meeting January 31, 2012. First thing we need to do is determine a quorum, which we do have, all five members are present. Have all the members have read the minutes of the last meeting? Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as presented to us?
Motion.
Any second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, minutes are approved. We do have some old business. First of all, as noted earlier, that the meeting that we had in November, we still have to approve those minutes, and we'll do that at the next meeting. The next old business we have is the Boza Resolution 2012-1, a resolution to amend the rules of procedure for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Have all the members have read those procedures?
Yes.
Any member have any questions at all?
I do.
Okay. You may address them to Mr. Richardson.
First of all, I'm just glad this isn't the Boza Resolution, which is what I thought you said there, Bob.
Yeah, the Boza Resolution.
Boza, not Bozo. My question, Bruce, is about in the tour section, so this is Section 5, Number 11. The new language is members of the Boza are required to tour sites. The previous version it was encouraged. I just wondered, I think in previous versions we'd seen that wasn't included, so I just wondered what the thinking was about that.
I'm going to defer to Kristen, because she actually wrote the resolution.
Okay.
I added in all suggestions that were sent to me from the various members, and that was Mr. Pollack's suggestion, so I thought I would add it in at his request, so.
Okay. Any thinking about that?
I think it's very helpful when we actually go out and visit. And besides seeing the aerial view, I think it's very helpful in our decision-making process, so that's the reason that I included it. I mean, I've been to every site that we've discussed, and it's really clarified the issues and also helped understand if there's any residents living close by, understand their comments. So that's my reason for putting that in.
I guess one other question I had about that is the meaning of tour. Just so we're all clear, I also have visited and plan to visit the sites. I don't know that I've taken a tour. I don't know what that would mean, as opposed to, you know, stopping by. Is it walking around? Is it peeking out of the car window? I don't know.
Well, first of all, I concur that it should be required, because I know that it helps me tremendously. Also, it helps me know my city a lot better. But some of these places, I have to use my GPS to find them. But I think it is very helpful. It helped me when, a couple of months ago, when we had that long meeting, and it helped me particularly again today, or yesterday, when I went out and viewed them. I think that by tour, how I interpret that is to visit the site and get a good understanding of what's being requested as best we can, just by looking at the site. To me, that's what a tour is. Is that what you meant by that, Kristen?
I believe that's what, I didn't write the original rules of procedure, but I believe that's how it was intended. I agree that since we don't really have a definition of tour, or necessarily, if we're going to require it, I don't know how we would.
They check up on us.
Right. But I agree that it's, I think it's a really good idea for everyone to go and visit the sites, so.
I would say that it would be not required, but in the best interest, requiring us to do something that, sometimes going out and looking at something, you may have a prejudgment before you hear all the facts. That's my, that would be my concern.
I think the other question, and maybe this is a legal one, you know, if it says required and we didn't go, could someone, you know?
Well, you certainly wouldn't be in compliance with the resolution.
Right.
Really fulfilling your duties under the resolution.
So whatever we voted on issue, if someone somehow had knowledge that we hadn't gone?
Well, I think it could become an issue, potentially, if it says shall, and then you take an action, but you have failed to comply with your duties and responsibilities. I think that's correct.
Right.
If you're also, if you're familiar with the area, and you don't go, and we have shall in there, then it could be null and void. To give us more of a option, I think we'd better use different wording. I mean, tour also, for me, would also indicate that it'd be more than one, and that's not good as a board, it needs to be individually. So visit would be more preferred word, in my opinion.
Well, we could use a term site inspection, site review, onsite review.
Site visit.
Site visit, onsite visit. What's your pleasure?
I like onsite visit.
Onsite visit.
Onsite visit.
Okay.
But do you want to leave it as shall, or just leave it as an optional?
Personally, as long as we're discussing this, I think the shall should be in there. I really do think that it really does help, and if we ever, I like to look at things, avoid a problem before it becomes a problem, and you brought up a valid argument that if we don't, we might be subject to misunderstanding, ridicule, whatever you want to say. I think it's just a good that we shall go out there and make an onsite visit. Any other discussion? Just to make sure that we're clear on this, why don't we take a board vote on that? Do I hear a motion? Let me make the motion that the wording shall be, that all members shall make an onsite visit to the property in question.
And, well, I'll second it, but let's have discussion about it.
Okay.
Number one is, what happens, as an example, that we get the agenda, and we're out of town, and then you come to a meeting, then you cannot vote technically. So I think it's not a good idea to box us into that area. Obviously, we're all responsible for what we're trying to do, and we go out there and have a look, but there are cases where you can't get there before the meeting, then you're going to box yourself in. So when you say required, it's a strong word to be used, gentlemen. I mean, just use some caution.
I mean, I think the flexibility is good, too. I think it's really good practice to do it. I have done it in every case, I think, but I could just see those situations, and you'd have to recuse yourself, or...
What if we said, members of the Boza are encouraged?
So that's the original wording, something like that.
That's the original wording. I will, as I understand it, as I perceive it, here are three members of the board would rather not have the word required, or shall in there. I will withdraw my motion, then. Do I have a motion on the floor to be made, the way the wording you would like?
Well, I think we'd better look at the other issues we have first, before we have another, we're going to have too many motions on too many issues. Let's get it all pulled together first, and then make the motion for the resolution.
Okay. I withdraw my motion, so we're starting fresh right now.
So continue on with your comments, that way we can go through them all.
Okay. Any other comments to be made on that particular item? Would you like to make a motion, how you would like, you think the wording should be?
Sure. So I think from our discussion, we wanted to change the word tour wherever it shows up to onsite visit.
Okay.
So that section will be titled onsite visit, a motion to change the wording to say onsite visit, members of the Boza are encouraged to conduct an onsite visit of sites which are the subject of application prior to a regularly scheduled Boza meeting. I don't think there's any other changes necessary there.
Did you get that, Bruce?
Yes.
With that, I'll second the motion. Bruce, would you mind reading back that motion?
I have a motion by Mr. Phillips to change all words that state tour to onsite visit, and that sentence would be, members of the Boza are encouraged to conduct an onsite visit of sites which are subject of applications prior to regularly scheduled Boza meeting.
We have a motion on the floor, as stated, and we have a second. Let's take a vote. All those in favor of that wording signify by raising your hand.
Let's have a voice vote, please.
Aye.
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 Unanimous.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Good point. Any other comments, discussion on the proposed resolution?
Chairman, that was actually a motion to amend the resolution. Now we need to have a motion to approve the resolution as amended.
I understand. All the other board members understand where we are. I'll accept the motion, then, to approve the resolution as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Unanimous. All right, we're ready for new business. The first item on new business is a signed variance for an off-premise directory sign to be located at 100 Cheerful Place, C2 zoning district, property owned by Carol Cook, applicant is Marvel Odds DDS. Kristen, would you give us a report?
Certainly. We're going to actually be deferring this item due to a change in location for the placement of the sign. They decided to change it at the last minute, there wasn't enough time for adequate posting in the paper, and to move the actual Boza sign that is posted on the property. So I expect that we will be revisiting this item with a corrected location, which will most likely be the intersection of Waldron Road and Bane for the same off-premise directory sign in February.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Kristen, just on that, could you ensure that the members get a copy of the updated sign ordinance? We recently passed a new one, we're planning to make sure they have the upper date one, so we can go to look at it, that we're looking at the correct rules.
Okay. Good. Good point. Okay, we'll go down to the second item of new business, a special exception for a training facility to be located at 209 Hazelwood Drive. It's an R1 zoning district, and property is owned by United Steelworkers. Kristen, please.
Yes. As you see up here, we have an application for, by the United Steelworkers, for an educational training facility to be placed on, they have three parcels of land. It's all showing as one because of the property assessor. I have a copy of an old plat that shows their three parcels, which I will be more than happy to pass around for you. The two parcels have a headquarters, have their lodge hall headquarters of them currently. That was granted during a Board of Zoning Appeals request for special exception back in 1984, because this property is zone R1, low-density residential, and that's the reason that they're here today, is if they would like to add on the third parcel, which is currently empty, they would like to add a small, it's about 60 by 80, building for the purposes of having educational training classes for some of their other union students. They can explain it better than I can, I'm certain, so.
All right.
And the special exception request would fall under, as you see in the packet here, a public and private school offering general education courses, public and semi-public recreational facilities and grounds. Those are allowable as a special exception in the R1 district, so that's why they are here today, to get approval for that. As I noted in the report, there is adequate road frontage and access. They've got, the parcel actually, it has two road frontages. We've got Hazelwood right here, the actual building, it's kind of dark, but it's right there. Mason Road runs down here, and they would like to build it right in this direction. So they've got water and sewer available, the water is there, the pressure sewer would have to be extended, it would only be about 200 feet, and so the total square footage of the building is 4,800. And that is our sanitary sewer system, showing that there's lines running on both frontages of the property. The water, we also have water lines on both sides. That's the front of the property as you approach it on Hazelwood. That's looking at it from, I guess, from the west. This is heading back down Hazelwood. And then this is, if you're looking down Mason, on the other side of the property, and that's basically what, where it would be located. It's just a lot, it's a lot of woods.
Would you leave the picture up there showing the front of the?
Sure.
The Union Hall?
Mm-hmm. Right there. So it would essentially be on the back half of that.
Okay.
Because Mason runs on the other side of that, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And I've got some renderings that they had sent to me, so. It's going to be just a one-story, about 12-foot, so. And that's it.
Okay. Do we have any representatives from that petition here this evening? Would you all step forward? It's just yourself?
Okay.
Okay. Would you step forward to the platform, and Mr. Richardson would administer your oath, please?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Larry Odom, O-D-U-M, 471 Ligon Road, Lebanon, Tennessee.
Thank you.
Okay. Kristen, would you show the picture again, showing the front of the Union Hall? That one, right. Mr. Odom, now, in conjunction with that picture, tell me again where this building is proposed to be, behind that structure right there, or alongside of it?
Well, we looked at two different options, and depending on where you let us build it, we looked at the infrastructure for the water and the sewer and electrical, and we looked at the, as you go into the entrance here to the right, it is flat there, and it could be easily cleared, and it could be built there, and then you would be, it was cheaper to be to the water and sewer for us, for the infrastructure. Or the partial goes all the way back to Mason Road, and it could be leveled there, but we did have a concern, you know, maybe on the backside. We're landlocked virtually all the way around, except for on the north side, we have a neighbor, and I have spoken with all the neighbors in the area, but the other is virtually undeveloped property around us. So we thought the facility would probably be best as we go through the entrance, but we also discuss whatever options are available to us. We want to do what's best and what's best. We have chose a local Rutherford County builder, and a community-friendly building that looks like a house instead of more or less like a structure. And like I said, I did speak with the neighbors, and they all expressed excitement about what we was doing, really, you know, and had no displeasure, no complaints about that.
Okay. Kristen, would you put the Union Hall again? That one. Is that road that we see right there, is that going to be the way to and from the training facility? Or are you going to come in on the road behind Mason?
This is the main entrance off Hazelwood.
Right.
And you could turn in that gravel here.
Right.
Put the facility here, or we could build the entrance and go back if we have to put it on the backside. If you get in between the, there and the road, we have a 6.5 acres, I think it is, we get into some blasting or something, and we didn't want to get into that, so we had a excavator came out, and he said, well, just probably right here. At some points, you put in a water line or something, and we let them dump the field in there years ago, and to make it, so it'll really clear off and be easy to construct right there at that area. Upside, we would probably have to do some clearing, but I don't see no, they didn't see any blasting on top side or front side.
Okay. If, your druthers, if you will, where do you really want it? Do you want it on that side?
I want it, we prefer it right here on the front, as you go in and take to the right, and this is 65 and 66 parcel, and that would be 66 and 67 parcel.
Okay.
To the right side.
And it would be rectangular in that direction with the door openings toward this gravel road?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
If it was on the backside, would the entrance be on Hazelwood or Mason?
Whatever, whatever we can get permission to do, I mean, we want it to be absolutely, work with you on it, so we could have an entrance on this side, we'd have to build a road through, or we could come off Mason and build a lot, too. But there is a curve up there, close on the Mason side, backside on the top, so we would have to build lower and bring an excess road in lower, you know?
And can you describe the training facility that'd be used during the daytime hours, nighttime hours, how many students?
Currently, we rent a, we pay about $22,000 rent for a building just over the Rutherford County line up here, close to Washington Pool, in a park, industrial park. And in that facility, we have an office, computer labs, and we have a back room where we could teach, but we've taught a array of courses onsite, like laying hardwood floors and ceramic and tiles, and we use modulars to do that. But it's not really feasible to do a little bit more what we'd like to do, but we have considerable amount of off-course, we pay tuition reimbursement, we teach heat and air, but we do that at a technology college or center somewhere else, or we teach, there's a array of classes. If there's anything you want to learn, we hire a vendor to teach that. As you know, we had a plant closure, a partial plant closure a couple of years back, and so we started this training center to teach people careers in between, so when if we have that happen again, another closure, they can move right into another career. So we teach some home inspecting classes, contractors' classes, electrical plumbing, virtually any trade, welding, but most of those are off-site, but we have a coordinator that has office there, that she takes care of the business with the colleges and the tuition and the payments for those type courses. We do considerable amount of beginner and advanced computer classes, and they're only held about once or twice a week, maybe once every two or three months, so. Five to 10 participants, most of the time, we've had them so long that I guess it, people is not participating in the computer courses as they were some of the off-site courses that we provide.
Any other questions from any members, please?
Yeah, I'd just like to go in just for the applicant as well as the board, and just look at the criteria for you, B9. What I'm hearing is, you know, we're required, for the private exception, is item nine, all items require a site plan or preliminary or final plat according to the submittal. We don't have this in this packet. You've indicated there may be a couple of areas where you want to put the building. What we don't want to get into is, we give you a special exception, and then you go to staff to put your building in a certain area, and then all of a sudden, the cost skyrockets because of access, because of water, sewer buffers. What I'm suggesting here, gentlemen, is although they have a good idea, it's their property, we need to adhere to our rules and regulations, and we need to get a proper site plan, which the staff has a chance to review, and guide the applicant, so we do not get them into trouble.
I understand.
So I'm not disagreeing what you're trying to do, it's your property, but it's procedural stuff that we have to adhere to, and it could save you some additional costs at a later date.
Oh, yes.
And so what my suggestion is, although you supply some building materials, is you really need to get down to get a site plan or preliminary plat or file approval drawn up by an engineer, present to the staff, let them review it, and then accept it, then come back to us with a special exception. Otherwise, as I say, what could happen is, you come in with your drawing, and all of a sudden, you've got to dig a ditch, or some tree lines, or a very large amount of money put in a certain area that could, you know, upset your budget.
Oh, yes. We have spoke with a builder that's directed us to a site plan, person to come out and do the site plan, and we'll do that immediately if we can get approval here, and meet with somebody to get the site plan, and then bring it back to your next meeting.
I understand what you're saying, but just so you know, for the application, prior to the issuance of special exception, the board should make written findings, and item nine is the site plan. So you're doing the chicken and the egg. We cannot do that, or we should not do that, until your site plan's been drawn up and been reviewed by the staff and the city.
Oh, I understand.
I also had a question about use, and maybe some guidance from Mr. Santella also. So one of the reasons for the exception is public and semi-public recreational facilities? So there's a fence as you come onto the property that says who it's for, right? Members and guests, I can't remember exactly what it says.
Yeah, retirees, members, and invited guests.
Okay. Does that fit within a public or semi-public recreational use? Is it membership-based?
It's, yeah, yes, membership. Members, retirees, and we represent the members and the workers at Bridgetown Firestone.
The sign outside specifically says guests?
Yes.
But I don't know about the use of the facility, which is what I'm wondering about.
Okay, and your question is, does that qualify as a public use?
Public and semi-public recreational facility and ground is one of the reasons that we can grant a special exception.
Prior to the meeting, I didn't research the issue of public use as far as its interpretation goes. My initial reaction to that is, it does sound more like an exclusive use.
Right.
To a particular group of individuals. It's possible that that's not what, the way public is supposed to be interpreted, that could be conflicting, and I'm happy to research that issue, and if it's going to be deferred anyway, then I would have an opportunity to, but I'm not in a position to answer that at this point.
Okay. There is a second, it's also in Kristen's memo, listed as included under public and private schools offering general education courses. We may not even need to worry about the public use if it fits within that.
That may be correct.
Okay.
Yes.
We do allow the scouts to use the facilities, and they meet there, you know, once a week or something.
I guess, I suppose it would be different if it were, you know, open to the public. I point there's something like that, but I think to narrow the guest list down, certainly takes into consideration a more exclusive group of people as opposed to the public in general.
Right.
But we're happy with that issue, if necessary.
Okay. It, you know, it specifically says private school, so it seems like if that fits within the definition, it would be up there.
Any other question?
Just another comment, gentlemen, that the, look at our Page 3 of 3, the whole application is reviewed by the board, shall decide within 60 days. The applicant was signed for on January 3rd, so we have through March 3rd, our next meeting is the 28th.
So that's well within the guidelines. Would you be willing to prepare, have a site plan prepared and present to us at our next regularly scheduled meeting?
If we could get on agenda for February?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, but I understood, I didn't know if we could get on their agenda for February because of deadlines.
Kristen, can you kind of grease the skins to make sure that happens?
Certainly.
And we can hire somebody for a site, we've already got approval to go ahead and hire somebody for a site plan, but we knew that was already coming.
We appreciate it, but what we need to do is get your site plan and get it to staff so they can review it prior to the meeting.
Right.
So they can incorporate it in the report and give us the guidance from our rules and regulations.
Right.
So it's tough for the staff to get it, you know, the day before and then present to us.
You need at least a couple of weeks in advance, don't you?
We need some time for the staff to take a look at it, for them to refer to us, for us to make an onsite visit, and so that we can give it due diligence.
And we have a site plan where we put that building on, and we was going to take it to the, to the people that we've hired for the site plan. Maybe that'll help them along, but I don't know, you know, how that works.
Okay. So we'll defer this until our next meeting, and then you'll make sure that that site plan is made available to the staff early enough that we can discuss it at our next regular meeting.
Yeah, if all possible, if they can do it in that length of time, that we, the people who we're going to hire for that.
All right. Do we need a motion to defer it? Do I, I'll entertain a motion, in fact?
Before we do that, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Could I just ask also, just formally, when that review comes to staff, Mr. Santella, would we can include looking into that issue of?
Sure.
The legal aspect of it.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we allow this petition to be deferred to the following regularly scheduled meeting, with the understanding that Mr. scheduled meeting, with the understanding that Mr. Odom will make the necessary information available to the staff in sufficient time as to give the staff plenty of time to review it, digest it, refer it to us, and that we have enough time to make an onsite visit, make a good determination in our next meeting. Do I hear a second?
A second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
We have one more item of new business. A special exception for a recycling facility to be located at four oh four Dick Buchanan Street. It's an industrial, one zoning district, property owned by Drew Wilczek. Applicant is Roy C. Mathis. Kristen, report, please.
Members of the board, I was approached by Mr. Roy Mathis, owner of Cardboard &amp; More, which is a recycling collection center. He would like, he's proposing to operate this recycling center, which is going to take in cardboard, paper, tin, aluminum, cans, plastic, just your, the general gamut of recyclable items. He would like to do this at four oh four Dick Buchanan Street, which is, as you noted, is an I-one light industrial district. Mr. Buchanan is asking for the special exception because it is required under the zoning ordinance. As you see in your packet, recycling centers are allowed as a special exception under I-one as number eight, and they also have to follow the requirements of section four point one one zero of the zoning ordinance, which I included in your packet. Mr. Mathis has indicated that he would like to build a fence, a, he essentially indicated he would like to operate this business in conjunction with the requirements, it would have the solid panel, privacy fence. As you can see here, let's see, it's not, it's not the best, right there. Okay, in the blue right here, that's it, that little building right here, and if I go back one, you can see that we do have I-one industrial, we've got some I-two heavy industrial, and then some older residential in here. That's a close-up. So, he would like to be fronting Dick Buchanan, this is the intersection with New View, this is where the preponderance of residential is located right now. And this is his drawing with the, there's Dick Buchanan where he'd want to have parking, he's got the building with the offices, it's an access drive. Okay, now, this is looking to the west of his building, his building is about right here, so you can see we've got, we've got a super, a supermercado grocery store, we've got a car repair place, this is a little bit more, this is his actual building right here. There's a close-up. This is looking the other direction, towards Murfreesboro Road, we've got a cabinet, custom cabinet shop there. That's our sign. And directly across the street from his site is Express Scrap Metal. So, as you can see, there's a lot of pretty, pretty industrial uses on that street. Where I showed you the supermercado, that was actually, they, it was also I-one, and they had asked for a special exception recently to operate there, so. And as far as the lot size, the yard areas, the frontage, everything is adequate for that type of business, so.
This is the factory operating in such a region?
Um, well, it appears that there is some activity going on on the parcel.
Yes. Okay. Do we have any representatives of that petition here tonight? Would you come forward, please, sir? Mr. Richardson would administer a notice.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Roy Mathis, six ten Sycamore Lane, Laverne, Tennessee.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, sir, that operation is presently going on, isn't it?
In fifteen oh one, yes.
At four oh four Dick Buchanan?
No, fifteen oh one.
Okay. Because I went by there, and I saw the cardboard loaded on the truck out in front there, and I saw the cans, I don't know what you call them, the trash cans sitting all in the back. There are several buildings there, isn't there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm going to let the board members go ahead and address the, go ahead.
Been on this board for some time, this applicant or sort of this address has been before and before.
Oh.
Okay, it's been, it was an issue before that we worked around. Again, let me point out, gentlemen, just like the previous applicant, is to get more information to us, the applicant's required to give us a site plan. The site plan as submitted does not meet our criteria, and therefore, similar to the previous applicant, we have six days to decide, I think the staff needs more information, we did more information, need more technical, exact information before we're making decisions to be fair to some of the other ownerships around there. So, therefore, I mean, to make things easier, I'd just like to make a statement just to make a motion to defer until the next meeting, where the applicant will need to meet the requirements of a site plan and preliminary or final plat and submit that to the staff prior to the next meeting.
I will second that motion. Do we have any discussion?
Is that a possibility, Mr. Mathis, to get a site plan and come back and see us next month?
Would you be agreeable with that?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion questions? Let's take a vote on it then, all the members signify by raising their right hand if they are voting aye to this motion. Aye. It's so passed. We'll see you next month, and I would suggest that you have the site plan to the staff early enough, the same as the previous applicant, so that they have a chance to digest it and go over it, and send it to us so that we have a chance to go over it and make an onsite visit to it. Would that be all right?
Okay.
So, the sooner you can get it to the staff, the better, and we'll see you next month then. Thank you, sir. Is there any other business to be brought before the board? Any questions, discussion? There have been none, I declare the meeting to be adjourned.
Laverne Planning Commission, January thirty-first, two thousand twelve, regular meeting. Property has been determined, ask for approval amended from December twenty-seventh, two thousand eleven, regular meeting.
Motion to accept.
I have a motion to accept. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're going to start with old business, final plat, re-subdivision of Lot Ten, Heritage Valley, nine point four acres, property located at eight zero eight Park Court South, tax map fourteen north, Group B, parcel thirty-four, and tax map eighteen C, Group A, parcel thirty-eight. R-three zoning district, property owned by Bruce Egbar, Egbar and the Heritage Valley Homeowners Association. Staff?
Mr. Egbar has asked one last time to be heard at the February two thousand twelve meeting. He has asked that we defer him tonight, and he will not ask for anything else once he's heard in February, if that's amenable to the board, the commission.
Do we have, do we know which, how many this is?
In, ever, or just in the past seven months? Because I think it's been, I think it's been six in a row, and then several years ago, same thing, so.
Okay, then I'm going to open it to the committee here and see if y'all have anything I mean, has he been given reasonable reasons?
The, his, his reason was that his attorney, who was dealing with the documents for the ownership issue, underwent heart valve surgery in December, and so he took off about six weeks of work, once he came back, you know, he was only working part-time, had to get back up to speed, and he realizes that the commission is waiting, and so he said, he sent me an email stating that he would not ask to be heard past the February meeting, so.
Mr. Chairman, we discuss this at length, I've kept the notes from this, I make a motion to deny due to the twenty-three technical items found by the staff, and make a motion to deny.
I have a motion to deny due to the number of technical items that hadn't been addressed. Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Is there any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have final plat, re-subdivision Lot Two, Howard Spain subdivision, one point eighteen acres, property located at five four seven nine Murfreesboro Road, tax map eighteen Bravo, Group C, parcel one, C-two zoning district, property owned by Howard Spain.
Okay, commissioners, Mr. Spain has asked to withdraw his plat.
Do we have a reason for that?
Um, due to the heavy nature of his heart, he stated that he, he wants to look out for the well-being of the neighborhood, and he doesn't know that cutting off the back portion of the property to somebody that he may not know, it may not, it may not be in the best interest, is basically how he explained it, and he said he would rather just put it, lay it to rest.
I'm sorry, you said withdraw.
Right. Oh, you thought I said defer. No, he would like to withdraw forever, he said.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Do you have documentation for this?
He left me a voicemail, I have sent him several emails, asked me for a hard copy writing, a response to my email, I haven't heard anything back from him yet, so.
When did you send it?
Earlier in the month.
Okay.
Yeah. I may still have the voicemail on my voicemail recording that he had left for me, but I did ask him to provide us with a written request to withdraw, so.
As a chairman, our rules and regulations require to vote one way or the other, our rules also state that they must do it in writing, and therefore, I make a motion to deny Mr. Spain's request.
I have a motion to deny. Do I hear a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is denied. Next, we have a final plat, re-subdivision Lot Two, Air Park subdivision, seven point two six acres, property located at fifty-six oh five Murfreesboro Road, tax map eighteen F, Group A, parcel one, C-two zoning district, property owned by A Plus Storage, Laverne LP.
Okay, you do have a new plat in front of you for the Air Park subdivision. All technical items have been addressed at this time. There should be at the, on the second page of, the third page of your planning commission report in your packet, there should be a list, or there should be a letter from Mr. Dean indicating that he had, he had followed section five dash one oh one of the subdivision regulations, which requires that if you're not going to install your public improvements yourself, you have to get three bid estimates and provide a recommended bond amount that will cover the costs associated with the public improvements. We did receive those three bids that are on the report from IS Engineering and Utilities, Stary Backhoe, and Nashville Sprinkler, and based on those estimates, they have provided a recommended bid amount of seventeen thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty cents to cover. So, that should satisfy the requirements.
Kyle, Kyle, you concur with these numbers?
Yes, I looked up each of the, or reviewed over each of the estimates, of course, they're, you know, they range from twelve thousand six hundred to fifteen thousand one hundred ninety-two, that's not a huge difference. Basically, what the engineer did was took an average, because he had discussed that with me previously, is how did we, once proceeded with that, you know, I told him, basically, if there's a huge difference, then he definitely didn't need to average them out, but when they're close like this, he could use the average, and then what he did was, after he took the average, was added the twenty percent like it's in the regulations, and pretty much he has followed our regulations like we've asked, and like you say, your question was, I feel comfortable with it, I've reviewed it and what information we do have on the location of the existing water line and the amount of work that would need to be done, as long as all that's accurate, then this should be enough to cover, which, pretty much that's all we can go off of at this point, but it seems like it should be an accurate amount. It is just the installation of a fire hydrant, you know, it's not an extensive water line extension.
That being said, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to accept is submitted.
I have a motion to accept is submitted, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a site plan for Erie Coy Industries Edition, four point two acres, property located at eighteen, one eighteen Diller Street, tax map eighteen K, Group A, parcel one point one zero, I-one zoning district property owned by Erie Coy Industries. Staff?
Okay, you have a new site plan in front of you here, there were technical items that needed to be addressed, that they did address, mostly concerning the stream buffer and that fire access lane that we had asked them to provide on the back. So, as far as, as far as all the items that we had asked them to address, they have done so.
So, each of the twenty items for the workshop have been addressed?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, accept is submitted.
I have a motion to accept is submitted, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Onto new business. Have a site plan, Laverne Hispanic Seventh Day of Adventist Church Edition, one thousand five hundred twenty square feet, property located at two seventy-one Jefferson Pike, tax map eighteen, parcel eighteen point zero one, C-two zoning district, property owned by Laverne Hispanic Seventh Day of Adventist Church.
I met with the staff, with, I met with the designer and the members that presented this at the workshop, and they would like to proceed, but they need another, they need more time, so they expect to, they've asked to defer in writing, and I expect to have a new submittal from them in February. a new submittal from them in February.
Deferral is granted. Next we have a final plat, Pinnacle Point Phase 3A, 2.41 acres, property located at Mundmouth, is it Mundmouth Drive, tax map 32, portion of parcel 24, R1 zoning district, property owned by Scott Butler.
Per the comments that were heard at the workshop, I did receive a request for deferral until February.
And this wasn't a, this wasn't one that, well, it's been on for a while because of the, does the board feel that we need to discuss this or we're going to grant the deferral?
Well, I mean, this is the first month it's been brought up.
This is the first one? Okay, I'm sorry, then. Okay, then it's Scott, but I'm thinking of the other, the team that came in. Next we have bonds and letters of credit update. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Chairman and board, everyone should have a bond list in front of them. Basically, everything's up to date, not really many changes as far as homes under construction or anything like that at this time. There are not any letters graded or bonds that are set to expire in February, so the next ones are March 30th and I'll be in contact with the developers and the banks on those to make sure those are going to be extended or may even be talked to the developers to try to get some of these finished up because some of these are the ones that, as the board knows, it's basically been fully complete for a while, so try to, try to see how that moves forward.
Any further questions of the board to staff? We adjourn.